Father, we thank you that you loved us so that you sent your only begotten son. Thank you, Jesus, that you gave your life for us. And heavenly Father, we come before you so we can learn more about you. We can learn more about your son, Jesus the Christ. We can learn more about how we need to treat one another and how we need to respond and act towards you, Lord. Heavenly Father, we ask that you be in our midst, Lord. Allow your Holy Spirit to join us together, Lord, that we might learn of your word and we might learn it collectively so that we could be on one accord. And we thank and we praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Okay. All right. So we, um, you know, we had a break last week, but, um, you know, it was a great break. And so, um, tonight we're back, um, in our lesson. And we were, uh, Proverbs, uh, chapter twenty-two. And, you know, before we move on tonight, I want to, um, extend the opportunity, if anybody got something they wanna add about the lesson, if you wanna talk about, um, you know, what Proverbs mean to you and, and, and how it's affecting you in your everyday living. You know, if there's testimonies of that, um, uh, you know, we, we'll, um, open it up for anybody that have any of that at this time.
Well, Proverbs, this, this series is, it just helped me, um, my, for my personal growth and my personal walk. Uh, it's helped me to just understand some of, uh, more of what, um, as I, as I prepare for messages, um, it has given me a more solid base, if you would, of, um, you know, things that I need to cover and, and what the meaning of certain things are in, um, as we, uh, develop disciples. Um, it's telling me more about what God is requiring and expects from us and what he has for us. It's a two-way situation, you know? And not only does he have certain expectations for us, but he has some really wonderful gifts and, and promises. And so Proverbs gets us in position to receive it. And it's what I'm seeing is that, you know, you can be in the wrong place and, 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 you know, and, um, trying to expect the right thing. But, but, um, Proverbs to me just puts us in a more solid position to receive the, the knowledge and the power of God.
Is there, you know, one else got, wanna add something? Okay.
Um, Brother Chris, I wanted to add real briefly, um, good evening, everyone. I want, just wanted to say that, um, similar to what Pastor was saying, uh, Proverbs have given me a, um, more of an awareness of, and I guess I would add purposeful awareness of where I am, you know, in regards to following Christ and how I match up with Proverbs. And studying Proverbs has, you know, given me more of a hunger to, make it a more of an effort to make sure that I'm following Proverbs, um, understanding the responsibility of it all. And also, uh, wanting more of the wisdom that Proverbs describes and talks about and presents. And so, um, it has helped me increase my spiritual awareness, I guess, in, in a nutshell. Um, that's what it has done. So I am very blessed and appreciative of us studying this and, um, I guess, you know, I could study it by myself, but studying with others and having a different perspective also helps with, um, me being able to gather and, and learn, uh, more and to see different perspectives and how they apply to my life. So I'm grateful.
Amen. I'd like to add, as, um, I appreciate that, um, uh, um, First Lady, Ophelia. I'd like to add that in, you know, in the noise that's going on a lot, whether it's politically or even in religion.
Right.
Uh, as I studied Proverbs, in, in, in leadership, we call this thing called grounding. And, and grounding is when you get all the fluff out the way and all the superficial and you get grounded in fundamentals. No matter how bright and shiny and splashy some other things are, when you go in and people talk with confidence and, you know, they might be talking louder, might be talking faster, they maybe seem like it's talking smarter. But you listen to wisdom and when the whole world can be talking like they, they, like they know exactly what they're knowing and because they have this or they, they've been in a position so long or because they're in power, and I say that with quotes, with air quotes, that they say they're in power. I just look at where I have the confidence of, um, of like a, an old gospel song by the Bethlehem Gospel Singers. When, um, when Bishop McLean, he would say, I know my Bible's right, something else is wrong.
Right.
He would sing that thing.
Yes.
And surely after, and people will say this and try to make that right and do this and try to make it right because of who it is or because of the positioning. And, and the thing is, is, and I told someone, and it was, I was confident in telling somebody the other day because, um, they, they were not in leadership in their organization. And they said, well, I just, I don't know what I'm gonna do. And I'm saying, what you're gonna do is do right. And if you do right and you stand on the fundamentals, you don't have to have a title to lead. I say, you may be the salvation of your organization, which you're just standing in the righteousness of God. And, and when you look at these fundamentals and do it, and then we, you know, we're, we're now in a series, the fruit of the Spirit. And I keep, that, that scripture, um, just keeps ringing in my ear. The end of that scripture says, um, uh, against these things, there are no laws.
Amen.
And there are no laws against Proverbs. And, you know, and against wisdom, against patience, against love, against righteousness. There's no law against it. They can't, there's no, they can't manipulate the law. They can't get a majority. They, they, it's nothing. I don't care how many parties or how many mon- how much money they raise or how much laws they pass. There's no law against this stuff that we're getting ourselves grounded in.
Amen.
And nothing can come against it, really, and staying.
Absolutely.
And that's what I feel. I'm just, you know, uh, I know that there are people sometimes are feeling in disarray uh, because of different political things or feeling because of financial things and whatnot. But, um, if, if we stay rooted in what we're learning here and execute it, we're gonna be all right.
Oh, yes. Amen.
We'll be all right. Better than all right.
Yep, please, you, you had your hands up?
Yeah, but they said it all. I did wanna add one thing, though, um, is, you know, the seriousness of our relationship with God. Uh, I believe Proverbs really brought that out in me. That this, you know, our relationship walk is, is truly serious. And as we realize how powerful God is, uh, being revealed to us of how his standards should be our standards. So when we're looking at the world today, we should be looking at the serious eyes of God, not, you know, what we think it should be. It's just, that's just overwhelming to know, um, how great God is and how Proverbs just teaches us or reminds us that the greatness of God, um, the greatness of our relationship with him and the greatness we have when we realize who we are in him. Um, it's just serious. It really is. And I, it's funny you ask that tonight because you're hearing all this stuff in the political realm and, you know, uh, how things are so monoterial, uh, monetarily designed to, um, create different standards. None of, none of them compare to God's standards and who God is and who we are with him. So that's a serious thing to really grab hold to.
Amen. Okay, thank you. Anybody else wanna add something?
Yes, I thank God tonight. Hello?
Go, go ahead.
Yeah, I just thank the Lord tonight for the book of Proverbs and how it has, you know, speak to me in a lot of different ways. And I thank God that it brought out to me how I must walk in the spirit and not in my flesh and not walk in pride and arrogance, you know? And making the right choices, making the right choices, doing what is pleasing in the eyesight of God and not what I wanna do, you know? Proverbs is all around us every single day. You can see Proverbs, you know, operating in our lives. And I just thank God for the teaching, you know, and not just to say that I was in Bible study, but take the word of God and use it. You know, so it can better my life, so I can help somebody else. This is what it's all about, you know, taking in the word of God, that the word of God would just be substance in you and you can help somebody else. So I just thank God for Proverbs and showing me how to be wise, not in my own understanding, but in the understanding of the Holy Spirit and the things that God wants us to do. You know, and not just be, not just be in a, you know, in the church, but have a purpose and, and a destiny, you know, to, um, to help other people that's coming to Christ. So I just thank God for the book of Proverbs. This has been a blessing to me. And it has so much in it, you know, about life.
Right.
And, um, it gives us a, uh, it gives us an overview of what life is really about. So I just thank God for that.
Amen. Amen. Thank you. Thank you. You know, anyone else? Okay. All right. If not, um, we're getting our lesson to, um, we've, uh, chapter twenty-two, and we've, you know, we, 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 we've talked about the, you know, the, the start out, you know, about, um, you know, about having a good name. And, you know, we, um, you know, how, um, that is much better than riches, you know? We've talked about, you know, whether you're rich or you're poor. God is the maker of us all.
Yes, he is.
And, uh, you know, so we, we even went on to talk about humility, you know, as being the fear of the Lord, you know? And, um, talked about children, how we need to start them off. Um, and, um, you know, as you, we just went on looking at the different things, uh, you know, talking about, you know, you're gonna be lazy. We talked about laziness. We talked about the, you know, um, um, you know, about folly, you know, about, you know, folly bound up in the heart of a child. A rod of discipline would drive it far away. So, you know, it's all part of raising children and you even be part of, you know, God chastising us, um, as well, you know? And so on tonight, we're gonna get started with, um, the part of Proverbs, and it's talking about the, the, what is called the thirty sayings of the wise, okay? Thirty sayings of the wise. So on tonight, we're gonna start, you know, we're gonna get started into, into that. Um, and if somebody will, let's read verses seventeen through twenty-one.
What chapter again, brother? Please?
Uh, chapter twenty-two. Chapter twenty-two.
Pay attention and turn your ear to the sayings of the wise. Apply your heart to what I teach, for it is pleasing when you keep them in your heart and have all of them ready on your lips. So that your trust may be in the Lord, I teach you today, even you. Have I not written thirty sayings for you, sayings of counsel and knowledge?
Okay. Uh, go ahead with twenty-one too, if you don't mind.
Teaching you to be honest and to speak the truth, so that you bring back truthful reports to those you serve.
Okay. Okay, so now, anyone wanna start a discussion on this? And so here we find, um, that, um, the writer here is introducing the, uh, the, the thirty sayings, you know, the sayings of the wise. So here it opens up and then we find this also, as we start, uh, in the book of Proverbs, is giving the, you know, the, the, the instruction of pay attention and turn your ears to the saying otherwise, apply your heart to what I teach. So, you know, it, it goes, um, here is, it's telling us not to just hear what's being said. You let it sink down into your heart, because once it's sink down into your heart, that's where it's gonna come, you know? And that's, that's where it's gonna become active in your life, because it's in your heart. That's what's in you. Or, or, or in other words, it's deeply rooted within you. Okay? And so it's, he, he's, he's, he's opening up by just, just giving that advice. And, um, and, 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 okay, so, you know, if you ask, you know, why you want this in, in, this sink deep within my heart? So it's like, because it's pleasing when you keep them in your heart and have all of them ready on your lips. Why would it be important to have them all ready on our lips? What, what do you think? So you were gonna let it sink within our hearts, so that means we believe in it. And, you know, we did, we just ingested it. And it says, um, it is pleasing when you keep them in your heart and have all of them ready on your lips.
Well, I, I think, brother, you, you know, that we are dispatched actually to make a difference in the world. And, and if we are, if we're not speaking these things, if we're in discussions and, and we're not, um, and these are not foremost on, not only on our mind, but just in our, in our, in our heart. Sometimes we're just, you know, I think Christians have been kind of passive. And so we allow stuff to go and people to say what they wanna say and without, um, anybody refuting or those kinds of things. So we need, we need to have the word and have wisdom, um, ready. I mean, you know, it needs to be just, uh, um, a part of our discussion and, and ask folks to, because people will come up with all kinds of foolishness straight off the cuff. Oh, well, what I think is, you know, we don't need to kind of be following what you think.
Yeah, right.
Appreciate it. Uh, you know, you, you might have ingested and thinking it's some kind of annoying. Um, so, you know, that's why we need to have them, you know, you know, you know, I, I, I would have, you know, the overflow of our heart, you know, that's what our mouth is gonna speak. And so if we, if we have these things implanted upon us, then we're prepared to speak to situations as they come about. Because I know there have been times that when I was ill-prepared and then I'll go back after that situation and say, you know what, I should, I had the opportunity to say this, this, and this.
Yes.
And was not equipped. Uh, but if you, you know, that's why when we're sharpening iron here, we're having these conversations and having these discussions. You know, uh, as soon as something comes up, you know, I, I ain't got to go run in no concordance. Yeah, we, we done had this conversation already in Bible study, so I know that's wrong. You know, and, you know, I, I know that, you know, we can go to chapter, you know, the Proverbs and stuff and find all that stuff wrong. Because it, we already covered a whole bunch of innocent stuff that we're hearing right now. We just heard on the six o'clock news.
Yes.
Yeah, we can confidently now say that that, that's out of order. That's sure enough out of order. If you, if you're not ready to entertain strangers and, and, and that kind of thing, if you're not ready to make peace with, in, in, walking that way, if you're, you know, if you're not ready to correct children and, and those kind, you know, that, that's all out of order. All of that's out of order. And we have the proof in the Word. And so that's, that's why continuing to do this, you know, prepares us, um, you know, not to get in an argument and cause, well, I, my political party says this right here. Um, my daddy said this, and we gotta say that. That, you know, because everybody else got a daddy in a political party. But one of the things that the Bible, the Bible says, you know, and thousands of years of wisdom of God says, then you put that out there and let them argue with that. That, that'd be there when you come back and leave. You can leave. And come back and be sitting in the same place.
Amen.
Don't change.
That's right. Okay, man. All right, thank you. Anybody else wanna add something? And, 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 you know, and, and, and also, um, if we're gonna be, you know, we're gonna be cry, uh, Christ-like, if we're gonna be the Christians, somebody's gotta bring, um, some, uh, some, some truth and some wisdom to situations. Um, you know, as, 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 you know, today we hear in the, you know, um, it's as if, you know, the world is trying to make, you know, a, a, a lie the truth and the truth a lie. And so, uh, somebody's gotta be able to stand up, you know? Um, it, it, it's, it's like, you know, you, when God was, um, you know, with, with Solomon Gomor, when he was like, you know, he was, he was saying, okay, find me, um, what was it, like fifty righteous? And then he, he broke it down to find me five. So somebody's gotta stand up and if we don't have God's word prepared or if we're not ready for it, then in situations that, uh, that we should be speaking against, it look like we're, you know, that we're part of it, because we're not and because we're not prepared. And so here, you know, part of wisdom, and this is what wisdom is teaching, that we have to have, uh, a word. We have to have something so that we can be prepared whenever situations arise. Okay? And so, um, he goes on to say, so that your trust may be in the Lord, I teach you today, even you. Okay? Have I not written thirty sayings for you, sayings of counsel and knowledge? Okay, so, so here, you know, um, what he, what's happening is here is he's, he's trying to, uh, help build disciples. He's trying to help build, or, or if we look at it from, um, you know, from a, from a, uh, a standpoint of, of, of military. So here, you know, you got a drill sergeant and this drill sergeant is coming and saying, I'm teaching you these things. I'm teaching you some wisdom, some things to think about when you're in battle. And so what we're gonna do is we're gonna get this and we're gonna make it, you know, what we might call muscle memory, uh, so that when you're in the hot seat, when everything is heated up and you're moving, you're gonna respond accordingly. You're gonna respond to, to, you know, to the training that you receive. And so this is basically, when we look at it from that standpoint, this is what he's saying. I'm, 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 I'm gonna give you these, you know, um, so, you know, all right, we'll have a word written on our lips, so that our trust will be in the Lord. We're not making up something. We're not coming out there and, you know, uh, 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 you know, um, saying stuff that we heard somebody else say. We're not coming out and, um, you know, trying to sound, um, you know, trying to sound righteous or religious. We're just repeating what? The words of wisdom that was given to us by God, repeating his words.
Amen.
Okay? And so it says, teaching you to be honest and speak the truth, so that you bring back truthful reports to those you serve. Okay? So you just think about, in situations that you're dealing with. And, you know, uh, uh, you're, you're in a situation where, you know, some things being said, it is not quite true. And, you know, all right, so, um, if we don't speak to that and we let it go, and then when we come back and the question is asked, you know, what happened? And you told them the right thing. Oh, I didn't say anything. But i- if you say, we saying some things and the question is asked, well, what happened when you said the right thing? Now you can say, well, they refused to hear, or you could say they listened and, you know, and, 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 and act accordingly. But we have to, um, and it's what's probably, what he's saying here, is getting us prepared so that we can boldly speak, boldly stand up. See, it's not like we stand up guessing. We can boldly stand up. And, and because, you know, is, it puts us where we can say, we know that we do know, right?
Right.
We have to have it in our hearts.
And we're not speaking our words. We're speaking life words. Because his word is life, you know? And that's what, what makes us wise is to speak his word, be in alignment with him and whatsoever he says. You know, we can't have our own way, our own theology, you know, we say that we're following Christ. You know, he's the teacher. He's the master teacher. So we have to say exactly what he says and not deviate and go in another path of, you know, doing your wisdom. Your wisdom mounts up to nothing. So we just have to stay in line with what, what the Holy Spirit is telling us to speak. And it's dealing with the heart, our heart. You know, we have to, this have to be in our hearts. We just can't, you know, we just can't say, say things and, and it's not the truth and, you know, and making up stuff. We got to be real and it got to come from a pure heart. You know, not just a heart, but a pure heart, pure heart, um, after the wisdom of God, seeking after the wisdom of God, because we don't know nothing. He have to teach us. He had to teach his disciples. He had to teach and train them, because they didn't know. You know, they, they was asking questions, you know, about, um, what he was saying, because they didn't understand. You know, but, but God has given us the word of God, the, the wisdom, his wisdom, because he want us to have wisdom. We can't make it if we don't have wisdom. You know, we can't be, be foolish people. We have to do exactly what he tells us to do. And sometime we might fall short, but hey, we just thank God for his grace and his mercy and bringing us back to the place that we need to be in order to do his will. It's his will, not my will, but his will be done. That's what Jesus said when he was in the garden of Gethsemane, going through all of that torment. So that's how we have to, you know, that's how I, I, I have to be. I can't speak for nobody else.
Okay. All right. Someone else wanna add something? Okay. And, and, and you know, when we're talking about wisdom and we're talking about, you know, um, he's, he's got, he's talking about this knowledge and all this that we need to hide in our heart, you know, you know, uh, knowledge, wisdom. But, you know, the important thing about wisdom is it teaches us what to say and when to say.
Absolutely.
You know, we can, we can, you know, because there could be situations that we have a word to say. You know, we can, we can, you know, cause there could be situations that we have a word to say, but it's not the appropriate word for that time.
Amen.
And so, you know, with wisdom, with leadership from God, you know, we can use those words that we have at the appropriate time for the appropriate situation. You know, and 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 that's how we can bring peace to situations, that's how we can, um, you know, um, disrupt some things that's not going the way, um, they need to be going.
Amen.
Right. And see, and and these these words, these words are are the words of knowledge and wisdom. These are some things that the church really need today. Because one of the things about the American church we find is we have, um, you know, a a lot of, we see a lot of the political ram has invaded. And so now, you know, instead of church, you know, um, the church and some some churches, church, um, some church bodies, um, are they're allowing the political ram to, um, lead, you know, and 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 be more of the direction that they're going in versus, you know, I'm a stand on God's word. You know, as as the saying say, let the chips go far where they may. But, you know, they wanna be more politically correct. And that is not part of this wisdom here that Proverbs is teaching. And so, um, you know, that's why it's important, as this is saying, let this word go to your heart. Because if it goes to your heart, that mean it's in the very very, um, innermost part of you. Okay, and and you know, if you wanna know what's, there when the, um, you know, when you wanna know what's in something, you know, you just squeeze it. Okay, so when you're under the under pressure and, um, uh, you know, all the pressures on you, what's in your heart is what's gonna come out. So in other words is, you know, we can talk Bible and quote scriptures and and move along saying all the good things and the right things. But if we in our heart, you know, we think that we need to be cussing somebody out, and then when the heat come along and we really squeeze, guess what, it's gonna come out.
Oh, yeah.
So we have to get in our hearts, right, the word, God's word within our hearts, hell events?
Yeah, yeah, and, um, when I'm looking at this in the message Bible, the title of that verse has a title that says, don't move back the boundary lines. You know, um, the what you just said about churches, um, siding with political views and and those kind of things, um, that that shows a lack of wisdom. Um, and it's not, you know, what's in our heart is not something that that matches God's will. And when we're moving, when churches are moving that way, the their hearts and and minds aren't set on God, they're set on their personal gain items. And they feel empowered because others in same church community are doing the same thing. So from the leadership down to, um, throughout the church. And it's it's, you know, that that wisdom and being wise and the wisdom and then speaking that truth. Those things that just sets things in place, um, that you can't run from. The truth is gonna be the truth, no matter, um, how we try to hide from it. But it's interesting when that title says, don't move back those boundary lines. If you get comfortable to start acting the way that only supports you financially or politically and so on and so forth, you feel like you can, you know, ease up on some of the the standards that you're supposed to have for God. And that's totally untrue. That that you you can't, matter of fact, you be we become, um, uh, victims of of the punishment that that comes with that too. Um, just as pastor said, that that word stays, God's word stays. It's then from the Old Testament to now, it is the truth is the truth. Um, what he spoke does not change, no matter how we try to mask it in today's world of acceptance or, um, even praise. The praises is changed because, um, they talk about, you know, how things are are done because it's God's will and tried to match this up with the word. Whoa, to those who are doing that. Um, so this becomes a very serious, um, message that, you know, be careful of, you know, trying to move the lines, it doesn't work, it doesn't work at all.
That's right. Amen, okay, so someone else got something they wanna add? Okay, all right, saying number two, do not exploit the poor because they are poor. Do not crush the needy in court, for the Lord will take up their case and will exact life for life. Okay, class, anybody wanna? Um, start discussion on that?
How about the message version? Don't work, don't walk on the poor just because they're poor. And don't use your position to crush the weak, because God will come to their defense. The life you took, he'll take from you and give back to them.
So, if you know, if I was one of these pay any day loan owners and one of these folks sometimes leveraging people at the pawn shop and some of these folks who are, um, u- using and leveraging foreigners and immigrants and those kinds of things to make their political hay. That is more serious than I thought. The Bible promises a life. I would be glad for grace and mercy, I'll answer.
Absolutely.
Yeah, anyone else wanna add something?
Well, pastor, I put this verse the same as you you mentioned, uh, for the prayer that we had for Sunday school. Uh, that, you know, one is supposed to love one another, um, you know, because of the mercy that God's giving them. This statement right here is just direct. It it tells you, if you do that, um, you you're gonna get what you so. That this is a direct message, that you you can't, with this, you can't read it any other way. I I don't see how you can twist this to work in one's favor, other than what God is saying here.
Well, all you gotta do is listen to what's happening today and see it twisted now.
That's right.
It's it's been ambliquely twisted and stuff, cause you know, the 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 reason why we're supposed to gather up folk and stuff and and with ice and stuff, because the all of them are criminals, e- every last one of them criminal. Now, my brother's detained. He's detained and been moved around the country three times. He has never committed a crime. Crime is is that he is from Africa. And he he, um, he, uh, educated himself, ended up learning five languages, his kids all graduated, uh, have graduated college in itself, the the smallest one. Um, married a professor, um, learned computers on his own, became a com- a computer consultant. But he's locked in a prison. And and, um, the current administration is saying that he he needs to be exported, um, because he's a criminal, a rapist and, you know. But they're using that for for political gain, to to strike fear in others. And so they're leveraging that to deal with people who are vulnerable. And and those, you know, we went from having the Statue of Liberty telling us to give us all these people to come in and help America to be a wonderful place, to let's get them out because they're others. Bible just right here says that if you do that against these people, the vulnerable people, as you interpreted the poor, um, which could be interpreted a lot of different ways.
Yes.
This this is a life for life, that God is going to extract life from it. That's what it say, that's what I like about it. Somebody gonna pay for that now. Maybe paying now.
Did I read this in I V?
Yeah, yeah, sure, I'll ever read, that's what I like about it. You gonna read it for us?
This proverb is a message of hope to people who must live and work under a just authoritarian leaders. It is also a warning to those who enjoy ruling with an iron hand. Sometimes God intervenes and directly destroys tyrants. More often, he uses other rulers to overthrow them or their own oppressed people to rebel against them. If you are in position of authority at church, work or home, remember what happens to tyrants. Leadership through kindness is more effective and long lasting than leadership by force. A little bit of love. Gotta have that love. You gotta have that love.
There's nothing on plan in that right there.
He will destroy you messing with his people.
You're right about that, Elvin. Gotta watch out.
You gotta watch out what you say.
That's right.
Do a child of God.
Amen, hallelujah.
Okay. All right, and so and so, you know, we we see here that, um, that that God does not like people taking advantage of people just because they can, just because, you know, um, as pastor said, poor, it could mean different things, so, you know, you take advantage of somebody that can't read. And you can read, you try to take it, whatever the case may be, he don't want us taking advantage of people. He want us to treat people like people. And and you know, here, you know, the kind of the big thing, and you know, and and you know, this, and and I know, you know, we we we're speaking about political things, but that's the world we're in, and that's the world that we gotta, you know, we we have to teach, um, you know, uh, based upon that so that we can know how to make our decisions that we need to make. But when we look at, um, situations, you know, um, at one time, the big thing was abortion. You know, abortion bill, that was the big thing. And, you know, and and so what happens, as pastor say, is it's set up, designed to 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 to, uh, strike fear or get to motions of people to make, to to show them this image of we're trying to do what's right and right by, you know, actually image of what's right by God. But one of the things that, um, you know, that that I see and I'm learning is that, um, you know, the the things we see in the Bible is that, you know, it's more of God getting more upset at the mistreating of his people. You know, he he ain't worried about, uh, 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 an abortion bill, he's not worried about a, you know, a bill against homosexuality. He's worried about us treating his people with love, with dignity. And that's what these proverbs are teaching, you know, we saw the one where it says, the rich, poor, God is God, God made us all. And so regardless if we have something, whether we have more education, we have more money, we have whatever the case may be, is in God's eyes, we're no better than the next person. And so, you know, if we think that we all that and we so much better than someone else, this scripture here is telling us that, you know, we can end up in the same situation that the ones that we took advantage of was in.
Amen, teacher, you're right about that.
Okay, Scott, you got your hands up?
Yeah, I was I was gonna say it that, uh, you know, something we all have in common is, uh, that we're born and that we die. And between those two points, it's how you develop and build your character over time and how you, uh, treat others. And, uh, God takes notes, you know, how we treat each other. Um, how we think, he reads our thoughts, you know, what, uh, if there's division, then there's an agenda. And, uh, you know, rich, poor, you know, when when there's division being created, you're not looking at people like people. You know, and that's what creates this, uh, process where people have bumper stickers, I I love my dog more than people, you know, I love, you know, they treat their dogs better. But we have a responsibility and a commandment to love our neighbor as ourself and love God with all our heart, all our strength. But he watches, he watches when we slip, you know, because, you know, we are fallible people. But he loves it when we go to him and ask advice, when we go to him and, uh, um, cry out. You know, help me with this, help me, if I have a drinking problem, help me with my drinking problem, you know? Don't look down on that person that's a drinker, you know? We have a responsibility to lift our brother up and, uh, remind them of who they are, you know, they're a child of God. And, uh, that's the, uh, the common denominator. So we did the born part, we we are, you know, we have the other part too coming up, and you don't know when it's gonna happen, so we have to, treat every day like like, uh, you know, like it is the last day. If we did that, we would treat each other a lot better. You know, it seems like the only time people really treat each other good is during a hurricane or storm, you know, everybody's out. They forget all about their fancy cars and everything, and they're out for each other. I mean, if we had it in our heart to treat each other um, that way every day, you know, it it, things can change. But it it's 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 a mindset to do that. And, uh, it's just something that we, you have to practice. And and when you do, it changes the atmosphere. And, uh, that's how I see it, is, you know, we do have a responsibility and the more responsibility we have, cause we can read and write, you know, we have a responsibility more than somebody who can't read and write. And, uh, God, God's counting on us to do the right thing.
Yes, amen, thank you for that.
Uh, sure.
Okay, anyone else wanna add something?
Yes, and you know, sometime people have a problem with who you are, but they don't realize that, um, our God is the creator of the creation. So if you got a problem with me, you got a problem with God. You know, because he's the one that created all mankind. I don't care what color you is, what race you are, God made you, you know, and you belong to God. You belong to God, and if you got a problem, you know, with me, you need to go back to the creator. That that created all mankind for his glory. That, that created all mankind for his glory.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay.
Interesting, cuz what my friend says, he says, um, tell me how that'll work out for you. Go see God about that, tell me how that works, yeah.
That's right, amen.
Yeah, okay, amen, alright.
Teacher, we, you know, we got, we all is human beings, we got to eat, we got to sleep. You know, go to the bathroom, clean your nose, and all of that, you know, what, what makes you so much better? You know, well, we all in, we all in the same boat, really.
Yes.
If you really look at it.
That's right.
So if you got a problem, hey, you, 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 you dealing with the wrong person, go to the creator. Ask him about that, why he made my eyes brown, why he made my hair curly, okay? You got a problem, go to the creator, he'll give you, he'll let you know.
That's right.
In a minute.
Yes, and, and, you know, as, as, as uh, Brother Scott was mentioning. You allow a, a natural disaster to happen, you know. So, so, you know, the, the hurricane that come, I don't remember the name, the one that hit the western. What was that?
It's Melissa.
Okay, the one that, that, that hit the western part of North Carolina, South Carolina, and Tennessee in that area.
That was Helene.
Helene. So, so, so he let them come and hit, and done what people didn't expect. Okay, people, you know, you have a lot of people that didn't expect it to do the damage it did or hit the way it did. Well, in that, you know, so now you got the rich, you got the poor.
Yes.
You, you got the white, you got the black, you got all the people, they're in the same situation. And then nothing that they can do. You know, you got a bunch of money, you can't do nothing, you know, you, you politician or whatever, you might have power. But you can't do nothing. And so, that goes to show us that in these situation, we all need God.
Absolutely do.
And what God is saying, if you want me to step in, when you can't do nothing about it. Then you treat these people that, you, you know, you, you, where you in a situation, you can do something about their situation. You treat them like you're gonna want me to treat you.
That's right.
And so we, you know, we have to, um, you know, we, we have to govern ourselves that way, because if not. You know, God is saying, life for life. You might, you, you know, you might, you might got over on me in a situation where you can control. But now what's gonna happen in the situation that you can't control? And, and, you know, uh, um, they were talking about the, uh, uh, uh. There was, you know, I think it was like last year, airplane crashed, and there was only one survivor. And, you know, they were talking about he's, he, you know, he's, he's actually speaking out now, so. The, and, and, and I brought that up to say, regardless of what the situation is, if God wanna bring you through it. Guess what? You coming through it. And so, we gotta put ourselves in position. That, 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 you know, that God sees something within us, that he will do that for us. Okay? And so that's what the proverb is teaching us here, you know, you know, it. And, and, and here we go here in. Saying number three, it says, do not make friends with a hot tempered person. Do not associate with one who easily angered, or you may learn their ways and get yourselves in snare. And, and, and for other events, um, the message says, don't hang out with angry people. Don't keep company with hot heads, bad tempers is contagious, don't get infected.
Yeah, buddy.
So, so, you know. Right here, it's talking about, you know, people who get angry quickly. Now, it could also say, it could also say, don't make friends with. Um, you know, with lying people. Also say, do not make friends with people that steal. You see? So, it is, um, wisdom to tell us. Watch who we hang around with, watch who we become friends with. Because the things that, the very things that they do, we will pick it up. Have you ever noticed, like, um, you know, um, either you hanging around some people or. You notice somebody hanging around someone else, and then you start hearing them saying some of the sayings that they would say. You know, like I think, what was the elements you wanted to say, as you say, how would that work for you? So, you, 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 you start hearing people saying things like that, you see how contagious that is? It's the same thing what this is saying.
That's right.
You know?
Even like Pastor was talking about the politics, sometime we. Do things just to get along, even though it's wrong, you know? And uh, it's, it says like, the people that tends to become like those whom they hang with or spend time with. Even in the negative, even in the negative characteristics, sometime it rubs off. The Bible exhorts us to be cautious in our choice of companionship. Choose people with characteristics and what you like to develop in your own life, so you are who you hang with.
That's right.
If you wanna be evil, you hang with them evil people, I guarantee you it'll rub off of you. That Christian's gonna rub off on you too.
That's right.
I look at them politics now, I mean, them politicians know they wrong. But yet, they gotta hang with them so they can have power, all about power. So you are who you hang with, you know? And the thing about it, I, I mean, if you hang with truthful people and golly people, you gonna be golly yourself.
Association bring on assimilation.
That's right. Yes, yes.
Brother teacher, as you started to share, um, you know, anger and, and lying and, and stealing. This, this verse is an antidote. Poison that you wanna put to that, this is the antidote from that. All those poisons, if you're around it long enough, you, you gonna get infected. So when you see a lot of folks in the anger situation, that they keep talking to get angry, and then someone's there with them. Then another person hypes it up more, and the anger just festers. Amen. Saying something, you're doing something that, that you, you didn't realize you would do. But it's like a possession, you got possessed for a moment, and you, you allowed that. To come into your spirit and, and, and grow with it. So, you know, this, this proverb, man, proverbs is real like that. Straight up of what's gonna happen, and, 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 and for, for God. And, you know, just as, as Elder said, you know, when you know it's wrong and you're still going through it, when you read the scriptures and you know what it's saying. Trying to twist. I mean, gee, I, I, I can't believe they sleep at night, I can't believe. There's this calmness over them, I can't believe they could sit right in the camera and lie like that. I mean, it's just, you know. I, I don't, I don't know how they're walking, and, and I know, and I'm. Really, they have to be, they have to be, um, have to be teamed up. With, with, with Satan, or, or, you know, the, the adversary, they have to be teamed up with it. To be, you know, sold in that way, so, you know, keeping the truth. Um, in understanding that, you know, our antidote to this is don't be a part of it. Stay away from those things, because we too can be infected. Cuz we could sit there and say them that, but we might, I might have done something just like this, hallelujah. Brother teacher, you said, there are different things, not just the anger, it could be something else I did. I, I may have picked up a piece of poison somewhere, and I wanna make sure that I'm not the, the center of this conversation. First, you know?
Alright, so, you, you said something there, now, when we started these sayings, we say, we wanna keep something. So we can have something on our lips, right? And then you made a comment about, you know, they, they, how can they, you know, just, you know, on TV and they lie and, and, and say these things? See, because what happens is, when you're dealing with people that don't. Um, that, that don't do their research to figure out what the truth is, and they depend on what you're saying. Which is, you know, when we're looking at these proverbs, it, it goes right back to the twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, you know, don't exploit the poor because they're poor, do not exploit, do not exploit the ignorant because they're ignorant. And so, and, 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 and when I say ignorant, I, I mean that is in not knowing. And you know that they're not gonna do their research, because they just wanna listen to what you say. Because they're think that they're affiliated with you. You know, right there, now they gonna, they gonna, uh, made friends with hot temper, or, you know, uh. They made friends with a, with a political party, and they supposed to be friends of Jesus. But then I they made that friend, I'm not gonna check you, I'm just gonna go along with what you saying, as if it's true. When you know you got that situation, then you can say what you wanna say. But when you know you're dealing with some people, they're gonna say, whoa, 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 wait a minute, back up, can you say that again? You see, that's what happens, and that's why these proverbs are so important, that we know these things, and we keep the word in our heart. So that it can be on our lips, that we can say, whoa, wait a minute, I, I, I heard what you said. But that don't line up with God, what God says, so. We need to back up, and we need to, we need, you need to say that again, so we can get this straight. Then they won't come over and, and, because you're talking about this in politics, but this also happens in churches.
That's right, right.
See, you get, you get, uh, you know, pastor so-and-so come in, and he start preaching the word according to him. And because people get too lazy to study for themselves. And to go check out things, or they hear and it don't sound right. But to get along, they don't say anything, and they go along with it. So now what he's doing is, he's exploiting the congregation, because they think, because he's pastor. He's supposed to know the truth, and he's supposed to teach the truth. Study for themselves, and they go along with it, and now, you know, they're going the wrong way. It's not just in politics, it's, it's everywhere, and so, we have to be wise enough. We have to be wise enough, and, 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 you know, and, and I know we have a pastor who would say. That, you know, if, if he say something off, then, you know, we can tell him, we need to have a conversation. And then we would just have to let iron sharpen iron.
That's right.
We, we, you know, and, and that's what the proverb is teaching us.
Right.
Because I know, you know, um, if, if, you know. Uh, um, a lot of times, what happened is man wanna get in a position where he. That the people is praising and worshiping him. Who wants to do that? But God's saying, no, it comes to me. And so, and so, if, if he feel, he can get there, and he can make that happen, man can make that happen, and he get no resistance. And, and you know, and we see it in TV, we see it all the time, where, you know, things happen in churches. And we see it all the time, that's why we have to know God's word, that's why we have to study the word. We have to be, you know, we have to be, and, 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 and if we don't understand it, and we go and say, whoa, whoa, we need to have a conversation about this. That's, there, you know, even, even, and, and that's one of the reasons, the two things that I do is. I, at the end, I turn it over to pastor. And the reason I do that is, first of all, is he's responsible for, he's responsible, so if I say something wrong, he need fix it. Okay, so nobody don't go off and go astray. But the other thing is, yeah, well, and, 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 at, at the beginning of, I give the opportunity for somebody to say something. Because if it's something that they didn't, they heard it wrong, or even they heard it right, and I misspoke it. Let's get it fixed, because it's too important for it to be about me. Okay, because first of all, I don't wanna go in competition with God. And, you know, and the other thing is, you know, wanna make sure that God's word is, you know, we get the truth of God's word. Okay, and so, when, 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 you know, we see this. People doing this, and they taking advantage of people because, uh, you know, the, the, first of all, some people just lazy. They don't wanna study, some people, you know, they just wanna, I think, Pastor may mention about, or, or. Um, Evangelism Mona may mention about being in Bible study, just to say he came to Bible study. Okay? But we gotta seek God's word, so that it can be in our heart. And then, once it's in our heart, we need to be able to have a word on our lips, on our tongue. So that when something come about, and it don't seem right, we need to be able to give our word. And we can't just go along, cuz we getting along, we can't go along, because, you know, I don't want the teacher to feel bad, no. No, it's too important. If we think about back in the garden, where it all started. God created, well, you know, in the spirit realm, God created all, he created man and woman, okay? And then when he formed man, you know, to be a part of this earth, he formed him by body. Um, and, you know, it was God and Adam. And when God looked, you know, he said Adam was lonely. And notice now, it was God and Adam, but Adam was lonely, because see, he didn't have a person. That of his caliber that was here on this earth. And then that's when God created Eve, right?
Right.
And so now you got Adam and you got Eve here on this earth, and then here comes Satan. You know, in the form of, or in the, um, earthly body of, of, of a serpent. And Eve made her decision, and she partook of the forbidden fruit. Okay, she knew, she knew it. We know God gave it to Adam, and then we know Adam gave Eve, because she knew it, because she told him, said, no, God, so don't do that. And, um, but what happened was, she decided that she wanted to, um. Uh, you know, God said not to do it, okay, she chose Satan over, over, over Adam, actually. And then Adam chose Eve over God. So what happens is, when we don't have God's word on our lips and in our hearts, so we can stand for God. We choose whatever the other thing is over God. Okay? If we choose to take advantage of people, we don't choose to take advantage of people, of people, over choosing God.
Right.
And see, that's not gonna work, because God is a jealous God. We made, whatever the reason was that we want to take advantage of these people, uh, we made that God over that situation. And see, and, and God is, and, and the proverb verse here is saying, God's gonna, you know, we're gonna, we, we, we're gonna even that up. You might go along and think things alright. And then all of a sudden, doctor come and say you got an incurable disease. See, you get in the situation, now God's got your attention, and all these things gonna flow through your mind. Because now God's got your attention, you thought you were big and bad, and you do what you wanna do, now you're in the situation. And, you know, as we've seen, we've seen people who were richest people in the world. Die to cancer. So, we have to, we have to keep that in mind, there's nothing that we got, there's nothing that we can say, we can do. That made us any better than the next person. Okay?
Wanted to mention. That, you know, the worst death may not be a physical death. It may be a spiritual death.
Yes.
And so, um, it may not manifest itself as, as, you know, as, as cancer, you know, that may be a way, but. The thing is, is that, um, the Bible says, what profit a man to gain the world, lose his soul. So there may be people who are battling with cancer, it might be a physical situation, but spiritually strong. Spirit, spiritually fulfilled, and maybe people, you know, have, um, certain diseases, or hurt certain afflictions and stuff. But they're happy and joyful, uh, because it's not an affliction according to what, because of something they've done. It's because that we're in a flawed world, and that those things do happen, so I just wanted to make sure. So I just wanted to make sure that it may, you know, it may, um, that we may, folks may be doing this evil thing, we might not even know what the emptiness they're going through. We may never see it. Cause it's not up for us to make e- exact that punishment. And, and so, um, you know, it's just like the, the, the rich man sitting in the chasm, which, you know, and he, he's wanting to stumble of water. Everything, he, he, everything may have gone well. Until he's gone. So we may not, even though we might wanna, in our spirit, wanna see these people get it. But they may not even get it. Until they close their eyes. And now they got it forever.
Amen.
Amen. Okay? Any, anyone else got something they wanna add? Okay. If not, we're, we're, um, we stop here at, uh, saying number three. And, um, um, I'm not quite sure why this, but you know, um, the, the, the message is, and the message is actually showing it at saying number two. But NIV is saying it, that's saying number three. But, um, whatever the case may be, we stop here at verse twenty-five and, um, um, we're gonna start at twenty-six on next week. And, uh, did I get out, anybody have anything before? Okay, if not, Pastor, turn it over to you.
Alright, thank y'all, thank y'all for, uh, great lesson. Thank you for great participation and everybody reading the versions that they have. That's some pretty amazing. So let's open up for, for, uh, prayer. And we thank you, Brother Teacher, for leading us in, um, great discussion and, and, um, uh, us coming up wiser and stronger. So we'll open up for prayer and those folks who brought, uh, prayer requests on, on your mind and heart.
Uh, I like to, um, um, I've got a message to, um, put Brother Ricky in a prayer circle for healing. Uh, I also like to put, um, the whole Nelson family, um, in a prayer circle. Uh, for, um, restoration and, and, and just, uh, for being such a loving family that they are. Um, Ricky and Teresa. Uh, also like to put, um, uh, the Fraziers in the prayer circle there, um. Their daughter is getting married on Friday, so I want to, uh, uh, have that, um, God bless that ceremony and, and those young, that young couple in the family to have a, a wonderful, um, uh, a wonderful day of, um, of love. Also, uh, the Myers family, I'd like to stay, uh, in a prayer circle for continued spiritual growth, um, and protection. As we put the pastors, pastor you and your family in covering and, 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 uh, protection. But also the, the nation as, um, things get a little heated, uh, about the politics and, and, um, people, positions and views in the world, especially those who have lost their jobs. I was dealing with a couple people I normally work with, um, other vendors and found that they, they have lost their jobs. And their families, um, are, are struggling right now. So asking God to cover all those who have been, um, a victim of this, the, this situation as well. And sent the, sent the ascents for, for healing.
Someone else?
Well, the Spain family for safe travel, they'll be traveling tonight. The safe traveler, get to their destination safe.
Someone else?
Just prayer for my brother and, and prayer for Dawn's mom. For, uh, healing and, uh, strength. And also, um, for, uh, retired, uh, soldier, uh, Ron Gordon for, uh, uh, we're just praying that he makes it for his birthday and, you know, we're praying for a new spine and, and all good things for him, you know? Served our country and served it well and, and, uh, so I'm praying for, uh, you know, God can do anything. So I just declare he gets a new spine and new spleen and everything that, that he needs to, to do, uh, the Lord's work.
Anyone else?
Uh, everybody, I like to request all those that boundary sickness for healing. All those that, um, boundary their mind for healing. And also, um, like to put all the real family and that lost loved one, put them in for comfort. And I like to put our leadership into the prayer circle for leadership of leading of the way that God want them to go. And the way that God, Holy Spirit drove within them, that, that, that he would guide them in the right way. With the right passion and all, all, so like to put all those that's homeless, put them in the prayer circle. And everybody be at their job and different thing and always keep my family in prayer too. Also me, that God will help me to be on my, uh, spirit at all time. And help me to be obedient to his Holy Spirit. And help me to be able to be alive, if somebody alive, that I can help him be who he is. And I thank God for everybody on this prayer line.
I would like for, for you to pray for Dominique Ellis for healing. And Cameron Sp- Spain for healing.
Someone else?
Uh, just praying the fruit of the spirit and all, all the leaders out there. You know, they have a responsibility. And if anyone needs the fruit of the spirit, it's, it's all our, all our world leaders and strength for the pastors. All the pastors out there and for Pastor Andy and, and, uh, uh, Pastor Adele and, and Julia. And, uh, I, I just pray strength and wisdom for everyone. We all, we all need it every day.
Amen. Thank you for that. Anyone else?
Yes, Sister, um, Vicky and Leila and their family for strength and continue healing and courage.
Amen.
Pastor, I did wanna add, um, the victims of the UPS, um, airplane crash.
Amen.
Pray for Pastor Jacobs that did the revival on last week.
And I wanna just give God a praise for our, um, fall revival and for everybody that participated and just for the mighty move of God that took place. It was amazing. And also for just praising God for an opportunity to minister to the children and, um, their parents during the, um, on Halloween night. Um, we set up shop on, at the church and, and minister to people as they came by.
Amen, I was blessed.
Amen. I also wanted to just add again, our, the pastors of Father's Cup and, uh, the leadership just for God to continue to strengthen them and, um, to give them the vision that he has for our church and our ministry. Um, and also for those that are being, um, negatively affected by the things, the decisions that are being made by the government and just praying for, you know, strength. And for God to, um, to show up and to, um, show himself that people will be saved through this adverse, adverse situation.
Amen.
I also want to add our, our praise and worship team, um, for restoration and continue, um, growth of, of spiritual relationship with God, um, because their dedication, um, during service and revival as well. Um, and also, um, our youth leaders who are impacting our youth, uh, the way they do.
Amen.
And praying for the, um, young man that we dedicated his life to Christ on Sunday.
Amen, yes. He is excited.
Alright, let us, let us go on to prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you, dear God, for all the things that you, uh, do for us, but we mostly thank you for who you are. We thank you, dear God, that even while we were enemies, dear God, dear Lord, that you adopted us. And that you grafted us, dear God, into, uh, as branches to the true vine. And we thank you, dear God. And just because of our faith, dear Lord, and our acceptance of you, dear God, you ended us into an opportunity for everlasting life. And we thank you. Dear Lord, we thank you, dear God, for the promise that you will supply all of our needs according to your riches and glory. We thank you, dear God, that you said that you could heal all of our diseases and you forgive all of our iniquities, dear God, in Psalm one oh three. Thank you, dear God. That, you, you ask us that, who will we be afraid of? Uh, dear Lord, we should have no fear, uh, for you are with us, dear God. And we thank you, dear God, that you sat in the table before us, even in the presence of our enemies. And we thank you, we just thank you, dear God, for all the promises that are true and real. Make them true in our hearts, dear God. Uh, these things, you already know, you're, knew the plans you had for us. And you meant to pre- to prosper us. And dear God, that's in our plan. But dear Lord, let us make sure that we adhere to your word and, 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 and be faithful to it. That we were keeping it in, in our hearts and in our mouths, dear God, and that we would follow through on it, dear Lord, and it will make ourselves, make our way prosperous. Dear God, these are already baked in promises, Lord. And dear God, so give us an awareness that we have a lot to do with our, with our mouth, what we, our attitude, dear God. And indeed, exercises, exercising, um, and, and demonstrating the fruit of the spirit.
Yes, Lord Jesus.
So dear God, we cannot be, uh, slothful. Um, dear God, you know, we, we cannot be weary or well doing. Uh, dear Lord, we have to be on this thing. And dear Lord, so give us the strength and the direction, dear God. Um, that will understand, dear Lord, that we are, um, we have a lot to do as a co-author. Because you're the author and finisher, dear God, we're co-authors because faith without works is dead on arrival. So dear God, we just thank you for this time that we could proclaim, dear Lord, that we can leave this place equipped with the knowledge. Equipped that you want us to make sure that we take care of the poor. Make sure that we care, have love and compassion, uh, to the foreigner, to those who are less fortunate than we are. That was in Christ's job description. And we thank you for that, that you were reminded that, that, that that we are for the collective of people and not for individuals of ourselves. So we thank you, dear Lord, that we're gonna drop selfishness and understand that we should be, uh, be on a collective wavelength, dear Lord. That if my brother's hurting, I'm, I'm hurting. And so we thank you, dear God. Give us the spirit of the Good Samaritan. We will pick up our brother on the side of the road. It may be us that need to be picked up one day. And we hope that somebody would say, if that runs over this bill, uh, call me and I'll come back and I'm covering it. And dear Lord, that's actually what Jesus said. Came and picked us up on the side of the road as a people. And then told the whole world, if you just call me, I'm gonna come back and I'm gonna cover the whole bill. He did that by drops of blood. He did that by stripes on his back. He did all of those things by raising, raising the resurrection of the body. He said that he doesn't do resurrections, that he is the resurrection. We thank you, God. That you are, that your son is the resurrection, that let him be a resurrection for us right now. And when he raises, dear, he raised, dear Lord, you raised him with all power. And then that circles back, us back around. The power to manifest all those things we were asking. The healing, the transformation, all of that, dear God, is in the power of the Holy Spirit. And we thank you, dear God. We thank you that two or more gathered and you're in the, in the midst. And we thank you that you would never leave us, not forsakers. We thank you that you said you would leave us for a little while, but you were going to give us the gift of the Holy Spirit. We thank you for that magnificent gift, that we have the power to speak those things to them as though they were, dear God. Even if they're not right now, even if we can't see them or smell them or feel them right now, we don't have to wait for that, dear God. Because we understand that we can call those things that are not as though they were. We have that power. We can speak to mountains and tell them to move off into the ocean. They have to crumble and fall. So we speak to some of the separation and some of this, uh, uh, evilness and some of this prejudice and all of this. The lack and that, that you, we, there is no lacking, you God. You have, you have so many minerals and so many objects in this world we haven't even discovered. And we thank you, dear God, right now. Um, for your abundance and dear Lord, start, let, let us just, you know, forgive us for thinking this is a zero sum game. That you're gonna run out of blessings somewhere. And so we apologize for that. You are God enough for everybody. And dear God, that means that I don't have to discriminate against anybody or jump in line. Because the thing that you have for the person in front of me and the person behind me is the same e- and equal and excellent quality of the person in me. And we thank you, dear God.
Yes, Lord Jesus.
We thank you, dear God, for your omnipresence and your omnipotence. And so, dear God, you are everywhere, good, well, all the time and sufficient. And dear God, we thank you for the pressed down and shaking together things that you have given us and that you have in store for us. We especially as we end this prayer, understanding that this prayer won't end because we do have the promise of everlasting life. And dear God, our, our lives will continue to echo throughout eternity. Because we will be sitting before the throne, casting crowns, saying hallelujah and glory to God for the rest of eternity. We thank you for that promise.
Thank you, Lord.
And it's in that promise, dear God, that we stand and that we can face tomorrow. We thank you, dear God, that we don't stand alone. But we stand in the midst of greatness and you are the greatness. How great thou art. All these things we proclaim and we receive in the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Ghost. And we all receive that by saying yes and amen. Thank you, uh, thank y'all so much. Thank you, Brother Teacher. Thank you all the ministers and all, all of y'all ministers, everybody who ministered tonight.
Man, that was on fire tonight.
Yes, indeed. Thank God for you. Everybody have a wonderful night and a blessed fall.